We have the minutes of January 3rd. Do we have any additional corrections to the minutes that we had today? If not, somebody make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Well, seven.
Since it's no construction, all fair to say aye, opposed? So definitely, how do you manage? Go ahead.
So I have, I touched base with Mike and Bill and nothing changed from last year. So I just need all the board members to sign at the bottom here. And in particular, where just the government's work.
Doesn't make a difference. So just as long as everybody's fine.
And what is it again?
It's people's actions. That's just, it gets referred to as state, right? So how many miles is it on us, the main game?
Yeah, you get money for that. So you have to, you know, you want to make sure it's accurate. So you get every dollar of the little bitten dollars that they do give you. You want to get every penny that you get. But they don't give you very much.
So if the answer forty-nine miles, about forty-nine miles of Broadway and Harford?
Forty-eight, forty-nine.
Now that's from John.
Then it's a class four or anything.
So it's about one point one, sorry, one point one and three five?
No, 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 it's, it's, it's better covered than all laws considered. It's class fours or four trails are not admitted in the way. Now, that's like calendar, that's kind of Morgan saying, I don't know. I don't, I don't, you weren't on the board, Kathy, I'm not sure you were. The first or second year that I was select board, we had some conflicts. And the board decided that we would have a calendar that each organization would submit so that we would not have one organization having meeting when another ones. And I think it kind of disappeared. So I guess Morgan is asking, should, how should we do it? Can we want to revise it? Go ahead, you speak.
It was brought to my intention and it might be helpful to have one place for all Grafton events. And it doesn't have who limited to Grafton, it could include some Athens. Like if they have a dinner, for example, could be posted so there's no conflict. I put it on there because our website policy says, except for hyperlinks to state or federal government websites, at no time and under no circumstances shall the town website contain hyperlinks to other websites. This prohibition may be overridden only the majority vote of the select board taken out of validly called public meeting. So I think if we want to move forward with it, I think I just need a motion saying that it's fine to do that.
Well, there was a lot of construction that we did not want to have, anyone with access outside. So I don't know.
Yeah, I was able to link a Google calendar to it. So it would just be my login and I would be the only one adding or changing any events on there. So anybody would have to report to me and then I would update it.
I would be okay with that.
Definitely, yeah.
Right. And then I, I talked to Morgan about it and everybody agrees. I said, write in articles for the graphic news telling organizations that we have a calendar on the website at least in their, you know, your dates. Now, if they don't submit, nothing we can do about it, but at least we're going to attend.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds fine to me. And I think once it's going, it won't take a lot of maintenance from the people telling me about it. I think it'll be good for me too to know what kind of looks like.
That would be my concern because you're running the roads really well, by the way. Do you want something else? That would be all your advice.
I don't mind at all. I think it would benefit everybody.
The division also had a notice warrant, which is a timeline of all, everything that happens soon to be. We have that. But that should be updated. We usually update that at March.
Like for a select one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have, I'm working on updating it, just making sure the dates are right. But I can share it with you.
Well, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Also our health officer, that is essential when the sets. The one I have an old cell, it will be one of the other ones.
We have a date on it, so I can unmute. Yeah, it's still, it's still up there. So this, you should want to.
Oh, yeah, I updated that. I didn't share it.
Yeah, this one is, we put it on there, obviously. How far from sort of like that? Do we have a?
Can we just make a motion and saying that I can go over with that?
Hello?
Second? All fair to say aye, opposed? Okay, good. Now, the town health office, do we have a candidate? Has anyone talked to anybody?
I just got, I asked Robbie Sprague and he just sent me an email about saying that if nobody else wants it, he will take it. But he'd like for us to advertise a little bit longer. So I'll keep him posted, but that was his response to me.
And what about you, Rich? Are you, have you decided on anything?
That position, in my way of looking at things, at things, pick up what's worth. I think that should be part of fire chiefs or somebody there that's very much involved in all the emergency things that go around town or in and out houses and see what's going on more than I do. And just for example, when we were dealing with CIC building, I had a lot of weight by the eyes of the state, by the statute, how they're written, being a fire chief and THO at the same time. And I do believe that should be part of that position, would make sense for the town. It has to be built and I would rather the fire chief do it or at least maybe assistant chief or somebody just so they can kind of keep it underneath that roof.
Do you think he's willing to take the force, the THO force from state?
Yeah, he's a deputy now. I had him appointed for that a couple of years ago.
Did he take your forces?
That I don't know. The problem with them forces, they always run them during the day. I haven't seen one either Saturday or always. I took a few at the very beginning, but ones I've seen lately, they're all, you know, Wednesday at nine o'clock or whatever.
So is it safe to say that we can maybe run a man, Grafton News again? And then if nobody shacks us up? Unless you want to just have a construction with Rodney again. I mean, I don't have the, and I wish it got a good point. But you can't make somebody do something that they don't want.
But I think what takes health officer for the town, they still need to take, take the force and know what the parameters are. It's not just fire and alarms. It's, I don't know, except that and water or, you know.
And mostly what they do do though is I can't do it in person. There's a lot of material up there that you can look at. They're very, very, very supportive at the state level, like at Huckline and all that. There's an email that goes.
Once he's on and he can be communicating with all of our THOs in the area and what they're doing, what's up, you know.
It's not that bad. Like I said, at the health department, very. Every time I've ever had any kind of a question, they go right after me, so.
Rich, you mentioned that possible candidate would be the assistant fire chief. Who is the assistant fire chief now?
Is it Nathaniel?
I think it's Nathaniel.
So it, does this show, I don't think Nathaniel's a resident of Athens. So the fire officer needs to be a resident.
They don't go there. That's something that Morgan can check.
I could look into that.
Okay, because that might be something, an alternative.
Yeah.
Well, I meant to, I meant to go see Robbie, but you know, he works so great. And every time I went in there, he hasn't been around. I don't want to, I don't want to even go out. Every once in a while, I see him. So if I run into him again, I'll ask him and should we run in there in paper? What do you think?
I don't know. I think.
I don't follow that. I mean, that's all I have to do to go. But I really think it's best if it goes down the direction that
Well, if I can reach out to Robbie.
Yeah, that's all good.
And see maybe the citizen chief, well, and then again, I'll have to check and see whether or not you need to be a resident of Athens.
He's not around there. They have a lot.
No, he's not around. Well, Rich is not around. More and more, visiting or visiting. All right.
I mean, you could always ask Robbie if there's somebody else on the department that might be suited for.
Highway?
Well, just, it's, it's, sorry. Eighty, the appointment's not until the end of the week, so you might get, get at least that point.
Yeah, I understand that.
So I didn't think you were going to resign and leave this town.
Well, I resigned at the twenty eighth.
Highway report? Anybody got a highway report? Ken, are you on? Looking treasure? I saw your name come up.
Yeah, she's on. There she is.
Ken, you have anything to talk to us about?
No.
We can't hear you.
Your, your volume is very low.
That's better?
Little bit, keep going.
I don't have anything to report. I'm just waiting for a date to sign the warning. That's all.
Okay, so she wants to set a date to sign the warning. So that could happen, has to be a special meeting between January twenty-third and twenty-fifth. So that's next Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay, so, can we? We did, this is a, this is a twenty-second meeting. All we got to do is sign, correct? Ken?
Yes.
Will we sign it?
The morning.
So we're on a hometown meeting.
And unfortunately, the next meeting comes too late and needs to be. So does anybody have any dates?
I'm on the twenty-third, but I could do morning of the twenty-fourth or the morning of the twenty-fifth.
I can't do the twenty-fourth. I could do the twenty-third.
What day is that? I'm wondering.
Quite check up you guys. What is this called?
The mornings. The mornings are, you know, we're going to go to the town meeting, we have to sign it.
So you go through the week for, okay.
It's fiction, but it takes five minutes. Your, that's how it's going to be. But you have to have it, doing your life, doing your total meeting, decide on it, whatever. Well, it'd be great because then you could have the change.
Yeah, January twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. Yeah, and it sounds like the twenty-fifth would be the best.
Yeah, I can, I can do the twenty-third, one of the points that's what I can't do because of. I don't know.
What does a Saturday?
Oh, January.
January.
Can't do it anymore.
And they can do it at five o'clock, too.
I can do it there.
Okay, you want to do five o'clock and then I'd say the twenty-third?
All right.
Here at the town?
Yep.
So it's going to be at five P M?
Five P M.
Okay.
On Wednesday, on the twenty fifth of January, not January.
January.
Yeah, okay.
Done.
All right. That work for you, Ken?
Works fine.
Okay.
Leave that.
Do you have anything else?
Nope.
Other beyond again.
Committee reports. Summer term job, you all address.
I have a copy that shows the two fire crews together at home in those. I think it's a guest copy.
I, I only need two because I can help you.
You know, it's hard to read, Kathy, but this, this is, this section right here is the new, that would be the new addition to the schedule.
Great. That, that's now, this is Jones, that's the one we compared it. Well, then that's the two together. This is the right way in, this is the other area.
Okay.
And that's the house that's over there.
So this is now the property and this is the kid, John. So this is for that? Okay.
That's the little one added to this one.
And they're, you're just standing on each other and then Robbie stays the right.
Big one is a hundred fifty by a hundred and fifty and little one is fifty by a hundred and fifty.
Can you go for them, grant us this?
Yeah, I've done it. I hope. I want to send that to John now.
Here, but don't, 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 it's not a totally free, it's going to be cleared, logged. And you know, so there's going to be some expense and we have to clear the property. Well, Ronnie, we don't have to buy the land.
They're going to land up the one.
Yes. And then I did talk to Bill and he does it very small, nothing with him. There's really no foster, anything else.
And what about Ken, you are, I think he was going to have a property this past week.
Haven't heard of him.
Haven't heard of him. I can reach out to him again, so.
Yeah, we asked if we could join it. Yeah, we got back with.
Oh, that's.
He has a little voice, he's going to sit it down.
It's going to lay it down, Ken.
This is for, what time everyone? Oh, yeah, this is only time that we're urgent.
Highway committee, anything? Parks committee, I don't think there's anything.
Is this where we want to talk about the citizen issue? If you want to.
With Morgan, why don't you go with Rich? I got another email this afternoon. Hopefully we're able to track that from the spread offs. Just another concern about the speed and the noise of the intersection. They were really asking if we had any updates. I'm kind of at a loss. I don't know what else more I can say.
But my thought is this is where this need not. We don't enforce the ordinance, the sheriff or the state police report it. Let the holiday email it, we want it, should be addressed to them. We have a copy. I mean, we can't do that. I have not heard any complaints from anybody else.
What are your complaints?
It was family who were, my sister's cousin was working down in Athens and pulling through. We got hit and went twice both months. Because they're not really around the bridge, not stopping, because there's no stop sign. So they're, they're just reversing the bridge, you know, and they had what? This is the one just right up where she just told me they need to put a warning.
Well, maybe we should send all this, all of it and hope for the state police or the sheriff and let him be able to stop it. Because maybe there is, maybe they're, maybe with you it's something wrong there.
Maybe we should ask if it costs a little bit more money, just go down there one day and.
You know, just a week in. So the sheriff could have it for the day.
We're going to change that stop sign for thirty-five, twenty-five minutes. Is that going to change?
So, yes, I ordered them. We're just waiting for them to.
We're not put up yet.
That's how you make those changes. See, I mean, freedom signs are only people who want them there.
I'm just wondering, John, this, we said that, so there's definitely an important issue. I agree with you completely on that. Having said that though, I'm wondering if we're starting to get evidence that have not that a stop sign there might be dangerous. And I think, didn't we agree that we would give it a try without the stop sign? And so I'm just wondering, what is going to be enough evidence for us to say we need a stop sign there again?
Well, I'm wondering if we shouldn't be the ones that decide that. The sheriff or the state police should decide that. And that's why I asked that they go down and stay there for half a day.
If they originally want, we wait.
They were stopped, but maybe they don't.
Because they're not stopping at the Athens one now, because people are racing right through. Then you've got people coming from Grafton, going to Athens, even if they didn't cross over the bridge. And yeah, they speed up and they just fly through it. So there's going to be an accident and actually one of the losers. You know, John, I, so you're taking it out of the sheriff's involvement, not just for a fourth thing, but also for giving out for the bus, based on your observation of what's happening at that intersection. And it seems like part of the problem is what happens early in the morning. Right? And at night, the people are commuting back and forth from when these trucks are going by. I'm wondering if we could ask the sheriff to go and sit at that. I think it'd be worth paying him to do that. For our peace of mind and for our information to pass the data, maybe to. Maybe he could go first thing in the morning, spend three hours there, maybe he can go back in the evening. And then give up on it. A lot of traffic coming from Dallas, followed by Athens. And then you've got people coming from Grafton, going on the bridge. Yeah, 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 it's, I think the complaints all should go to them. We evaluate. And then you're saying maybe come back to us and say, this is what we recommend. Yeah. I mean, it's.
So maybe have Morgan contact the sheriff and tell him what our problem is. And tell him, you know, I think, see if they'll come and you're willing to, you know, put some extra hours in to do it. And get, we, what we're looking for is a recommendation.
You don't have to see any real downside. You can put stop sign there after that.
Well, what's the downside? Well, we have two stop signs. The problem is that who knows? You see that? You know what I'm saying? Because they both stop and then they both either go together or not. That's the problem.
That's the, the airbreaker had a three stop, so.
I mean, when you do.
Truck is there.
It's going to be on the back of the line. You go first and you go second and it goes third.
That was first, probably. No, I don't think anything's the perfect solution, I'm not sure. You know, maybe something better than what we have.
A stop sign put back where we have it. Rather.
Yeah.
And a little speed sign, which you're going to get. Trucks coming from Athens with their brakes, what do you call them?
Jakes.
Yeah, because there's a slight incline down. And that's going to be a problem for us for a while.
Well, why don't we wait for the sheriff and see what he's.
And I just have to be on level with knowledge that excellent communication that Morgan has had with this man. Thank you.
Parks committee, you want to talk about the grant?
I, I just put that on there because I'm ready, almost ready to submit the grant. It's due on Monday. So just enough, you know.
This, this is for?
Our, our T P, recreation trust.
Okay, this is not A, this is not A and B?
No. I'm going to, I'm going to work on that as soon as this.
How much is that?
Um, the, well, we kind of inflated it a little bit. So it's right around thirty thousand. Looking down here. It's, it's twenty percent. So it's just about seven, just over seventy.
I believe that can be accrued in volunteer hours.
And that's the biggest chunk of that share.
Okay, personnel, Dr. Dr. Allen, is it?
Yeah.
So there you have it.
Okay. I want to thank Ken and Michelle for their time on this. Because what we did, we looked back at the comp time versus the overtime from last year to today. And mainly, it was pointed out by Ken that our budget, we went over overtime. So what we're, we went back and forth with the comp time and felt that we should, we should delete the comp time as a component of calculating overtime. Keep the provision for no carryover and keep the provision for a hundred and twenty hours maximum in any given year. In this way, we have more control of their use of overtime, not going way over because of the comp time. We debated about, well, can we go eighty hours, can we go a hundred hours? And Ken, he said, well, we, it's been increased. We increased it by five thousand dollars because we're using too much overtime in the comp time. So that's what came up.
I just had one question. Oh, that's the hundred and twenty hours. Keep it at a hundred and twenty hours, not that they use twenty, then replenish it. And I think you addressed that down in the third line from the bottom. But does that really say that?
It already is in the third half policy that there's no replenishment. That's in there already, John. That was one of the things that asked in the original personnel policy back in the center twenty-one. And we just wanted to restate that that remains the same.
So the word replenish is in there.
I'm going to double down when we ask the word replenish to it.
Because, you know, you end up with a hundred eighty, two hundred.
Yeah, I know, it's not the ultimate, you're right. So the specific wording is, there's no carryover.
No carryover.
Keep comp time, keep your comp time.
The typical branch personnel, what difference, did replenish it there?
No, the word carryover, no carry. They can't carry it over for next year.
They did that, but this is during the year. If you went to a hundred and twenty and then you take thirty hours, say, during the year, then replace that twenty again and you're back up to a hundred and twenty. So then you've got a hundred and forty hours of, of, of. Yeah, and in the third sentence, they keep the provision of a hundred and twenty hours maximum in any given year. But I think you mean the word in there replenish is something that it can't be. After you've taken some of the comp time during the year, you can't replenish it.
Just wondering. When you take comp time out of the definition, you can't use comp time to calculate.
For comp, for time ahead, you know.
Doesn't that take care of that program on this and stuff, right? It goes to overtime. It goes to overtime at that point. No. It goes to overtime, it goes to overtime at that point, no. So, hmm, I think we may, I, I'm not quite sure.
You need another senator, something that says you can't replenish comp time during the year that you have used.
Is, is Kim on the line, is she, did she sign off?
She's still on.
Let's talk to Kim about this. Because I honestly felt that we were taking care of that. But I, what you're saying just makes me understand, you're saying, if, if the employee calculates a hundred and twenty hours of overtime, of comp time, and then uses, let's say, eight hours of comp time, and then, what's wrong with time if you convert that to comp time, the one twenty can be replenished?
Yeah, because then, in that case, it'd be one thirty.
No, you can't. Employees, they earn comp time, well, the maximum balance of one twenty, you can't.
Right, but, but.
Let's, let's, let's get Kim on the line so she can answer this, this is a matter of how they can.
No, no, but you're, you're right, but see, if you have, if you have a hundred and twenty hours, and then you take ten hours of overtime, and you reduce it back down to a hundred, yeah.
Yeah, but I think what they do is they cut it right off. I mean, if I look at the, uh, sheets that they.
Then what's wrong with.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just trying to figure that out.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm on my cell phone. Sorry, I, I switched to another, um, another computer or phone. So what is the question?
Now you're answering, you sound like him.
What was the question?
Uh, if, uh, what I want to do is then you can't replenish any of your comp time. Once you reach a hundred and twenty hours, if you take ten hours, you're down to a hundred and ten, you can't during that year put another ten back in.
Right, no.
But it don't say that anywhere.
Oh, okay, I, I, I didn't actually read what they wrote up, um, I briefed through it, but no, the way we have it now is once they hit one twenty, that's it, everything else after that then becomes paid out in overtime.
Yeah.
Um, or they can use part of that one twenty with, along the rest of the year, but we keep track that they used part of the one twenty until they get to the very end of the year, and whatever is left and remaining, they get paid out for it, or they take it.
Okay.
So on the time sheet itself, I remember this now, it gets left, once they get to the one twenty, it goes one.
Yeah, I think what you're doing is, I don't do it, so like, I just have it in the map, a hundred and eighty-two.
On having a maximum probably. So if people have been satisfied with this concern, and Kim, if you, uh, agree, it says employees made our comp time up to a maximum balance of one hundred and twenty hours in one calendar year with no replenish.
Yes.
That would do it?
Yes.
Are you, are you okay with that, Kim, because that is the way you're doing it anyway?
It's the way we're doing it, yes.
Okay, so that's a change. That is great.
It's there, that happened, but if you had to change somebody else's, then you could have a problem.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, see, we'll change this. There is no carryover, that's. We're gonna have to add another paragraph about the replenish.
Right, you want, we don't, we don't, we want to, we connect me and there again?
No, I think it should just be in the, um, mess, Mr. Care, and then we'll just, uh, pass this document, give it to more of them. And then I think we did, we did, uh, progress, they got my consent spot, and he agreed with that.
All right, so we don't, we, we need to have a motion there, I think. So someone want to make a motion?
Okay.
Can we accept this revision?
Yeah, please accept the, uh, compensatory time off, obviously, that we recommend tonight, uh, with the revision we just mentioned.
Thank you. Is that our second?
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, I will say, say aye, 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 okay, good.
Thank you for that, uh, fact, yeah.
And, and you'll, and then you'll give it more than you.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that would just, uh.
Um, Thursdays and the grounds, I guess you have this inspection coming up on Thursday or Thursdays?
Yeah, Thursday, uh, they pushed it back to eleven o'clock. So they're gonna be here Thursday at eleven to walk through and look at the work that all season has done. Um, it's not the inspection on the hour there quite yet, we still need to set a date for that.
Like, you can't do it, you, you want to do it?
Okay, Thursday, that's Thursday, yeah, the nineteenth, at eleven.
So Morgan, who is coming to the inspection, the walkthrough?
Um, as far as I know, it's Chris Cole from the Cole Company, Butch, and, um, Dave Danhouse.
Okay, so the engineer will be there?
Yeah, as far as I know, that's, that's been the communication so far.
Okay, I just have concerns for that, um, change order for the elevator extra box, whatever, that sounds like it wasn't in the engineered plans, but the elevator company said it was required, and then we ended up having to pick up the extra.
And that would be Chris Cole, right?
I would believe so.
Okay, yeah.
Are you happy with the door?
No.
I haven't heard if the door's been corrected or not, um, did they send you a revised?
They have not.
Invoice, no.
They have not, I'm, I'm hoping that they'll come more prepared on Thursday, but I'll follow up with them tomorrow to confirm exactly who's going and if they can bring those.
You've got a fifteen hundred dollar door, now it's thirty, one hundred dollars.
Wow.
But I don't understand what's going on there.
What's the change over on the, what about the?
There's a, an electrical box in the elevator shaft that wasn't in the original plan.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah.
So who's approved on that, who's gonna be there?
Oh, I'm coming.
I'm not too sure if it can, I think I get class until ten thirty that moment, I don't think I'll make it back in time. But if I'm wrong about the time, it's fine with me, so I don't get to be there all day, but not too sure when the last class will be. Okay.
Well, I, I know during the walkthrough, I'm, I mean, I know I can pick out little things, but I would kind of want some direction as to how picky am I getting compared to what we owe, and when should we start paying them our final payment, you know, what are our rights? I know there's small things that are showing up on the walls, that actual, the public's picking out, that they didn't properly do, do we not pay them to those who are done, um? I mean, their latest bill is asking for fifty-nine thousand dollars, which is only fourteen thousand shy of the overall project. Um, but then again, my concern is the envelop, the elevator hasn't actually been inspected by the elevator company. So if we were to pay the fifty-nine thousand, and there's only fourteen thousand left, is that enough if the elevator company comes in and says, no, this doesn't pass inspection? Uh, do we pay the fifty-nine, do we, and leave only fourteen left to be paid, um, I don't, I'm not really sure what we should be or shouldn't do.
But, personally, you should be very picky. You pay, you pay the money.
Absolutely.
And it, it, it should be a first-class job, not a, not a second-class job, so if there are defects, they should correct those things, that, that would be my, that's my.
So should we not be paying that fifty-nine thousand dollar balance until the elevator's actually inspected, even though our contract says that we are to be paying in like, within like ten days of invoice?
So who was in charge of inspecting the elevator, was that on the general contractor, or was that us?
I believe it's the elevator company itself, which is set up by the contractor, the, the inspection.
So let the contractor get it done, then he gets paid, that's how it's managed.
Okay, I, I just don't know what to tell them, um, I mean, that's my feeling, but I'm not the board.
No, I, I, I think that if they're responsible for the inspection, then it's up to them to get the thing inspected, not us. I, I mean, do we all agree here?
I enjoy it, yeah.
Yeah. Prior to paying that large amount then, right?
Absolutely, sure. Because what happens if, if the inspection fails, uh, and they gotta, they gotta rip some things apart, and then, then you're, then you're in a situation where you're gonna be, you know, get lawyers and everything else, so I don't, I don't think you want to do that.
Just to ensure we're understanding this correctly, Kim, you said that it is the contractor's responsibility to set up the inspection.
Yeah, that's Morgan, yeah, Morgan knows, is the one on, on top of that.
Okay, so yes, I think the point of view that they need to carry that all the way through the conclusion of inspection before they get paid is gonna assist with the contract.
And be picky.
And be picky. So drop, drop all those things, Kim, that you know that need to be repaired, we have that for Thursday.
All right.
You just play the board, that's fine. It's always nice to play that good bad, good cop, bad cop link. Nothing wrong with that.
Okay, so we're all set on that?
Um, and a bit on the flooring. So the lobby and hallway flooring is done, as you may notice.
Looks nice.
It does, yeah, and, and they were quick, you know, they were here in like a day and a half, so they got it done pretty quick. They're coming back next Thursday, the twenty-sixth. So starting then, they'll be here Thursday and Friday of that week, and then Monday through Thursday of the following week. So that gives them six days to do the three offices. Um, prior to that, Kim and I are gonna work on cleaning up our offices and moving everything out of the way as much as we can, but the flooring people did say that they would help us move the heavy furniture, so. Yeah.
So we're about, we have an appointment spring off day, and then, you're in that appointment, or?
So, uh, we don't have any appointments scheduled, correct? Is that right, Kim?
Right, that's right.
So we were able to kind of move things around as best as we could, so nothing's currently scheduled.
Okay.
And what about the James and Kate's, uh, boiler thing, uh, that come out?
It's not, I, I talked to Kim on Friday, and they made a recommendation, but I think the building committee needs to, to come out and give a sort of what, what our options are.
Okay.
So James, I had rivers.
They came in and talked to Kim.
Oh, I did know that.
Um, well, Rich, they came and made a delivery on Tuesday of last week, so I just kind of ran outside to catch Tony. Um, Tony doesn't know if through all the holiday chaos, maybe the appointment didn't come through, or he didn't get it, or one wasn't made, but he didn't realize he was supposed to meet with you. Um, but I said the best time to meet with you is usually during school vacations. So if this isn't like, uh, a necessity, February is usually pretty hectic for them still. Um, an April visit, when you have April vacation, if that would work. Um, we just.
They have to hire me, they have to hire me as assistant, too, so I can be a little more flexible.
Okay, well, and I told them it's not in a big, nothing's gonna happen like immediately, but we just chatted a little bit about the furnace down there. Um, the reason, we just, um, got the bill, we used fifty-one gallons of heating fuel in the last month, month and a half. Um, I asked him why, you know, we would use fifty-one gallons when we're using nothing but the heat pumps. Um, he said we have about a hundred gallons worth of hot water that were keeping that boiler up to temp. And that's primarily, primarily what it is, you have to keep the boiler up to temp. If we were to get a smaller boiler, you might be looking at eleven gallons versus a hundred, that we would be keeping it up to temp. Um, it, it makes a, a huge difference, he said, you know, this was kind of a discussion that was almost had over five years ago. Um, I mean, and when Stan was on the board, too, we kept batting it around, um, but never really got into it. So it's something he'll come back and visit, he did mention, you know, it might be a good idea to replace the oil tank while it's there, because it's almost at its life expectancy. Um, you might get another year or two, but while they're down there, you know, you can replace that. Um, it's definitely something he'll come back and talk to you about, and then give some quotes. Um, I did get our light bill, I was in the office briefly this afternoon, and our light bill has jumped up to like three hundred dollars, three fifty. So it did take a big jump using the, all of the heat pumps, and only the heat pumps. So it's not, it's gonna be a little while before we can actually calculate electric increase versus the decrease in the oil, and, and what's the best scenario?
So Kim, is that three hundred and fifty dollars increase?
Uh, no, it was three hundred and fifty dollars, it's about another hundred dollar increase. So if the last bill, I think, was about two hundred and fifty-three dollars, two forty-three, and if, if my mind serves me right, because I just looked at it quickly, and I think it was three fifty-four this month.
Three hundred and fifty-four. I'm reading some place, they didn't look at my files, then, uh, don't know the source, don't know if it's accurate on Eric, but I don't know, he's on, he could probably tell more about than, than me, but. Uh, the average, when you convert over to the heat pumps, uh, the average state would be about twenty, twenty percent a year, how much? Twenty?
Twenty.
Percent, if you look at the overall. And they told me, quote, I'm not quoting, James and Kate, when I called them to set up that appointment, and I did call back to check up on it too, by, by the way, if you give it to me, they would be in touch. Uh, she told me our oil, and Kim would probably know just by looking at the bill, but she told me, uh, we had, we had about a forty percent.
Decrease.
On, well, she said about forty percent savings on the usage. Not the overall cost, because it's double the price, but. I want that accurate.
But I think there's, there's something else that I, I think we get, better way to see, the legislature has two bills pending, and one is that you can't have any, any more gas or oil heat after a certain date. And then there's another bill where the, the, um, I don't know, I can't explain it exactly, but the oil companies are gonna, there's something that the oil companies are gonna have to do, which is gonna raise the price of fuel, which is gonna force people to go to heat pumps. This is, these are two bills, legislature did that, and Scott, they did one of these bills last year, but I don't think that's according to what I've been reading, is that he doesn't have the, uh, uh, votes to override, the voting, the votes are there overriding this year, so who knows what's gonna happen, but, but apparently, we're, you know, if we get the long range of what's going on, that discharging any use of propane heat of oil or any other thing, everybody wants to go electric.
Water, or?
Water, this is. I think, I think you have time to, to research the total project, it's not that you need to do more research.
Yeah.
Then remember some of the use.
And there may be, on the other hand, there may be energy efficient grants that are available, especially to be discussed. So we could, Morgan can just look into that.
The Calico, it is already passed, I like.
Some states have it.
I mean, the Calico, you don't, I thought I heard it.
Or anything else in the building? If the wastewater, there is nothing, um, we haven't heard that, Morgan keeps sending things, and so they're just, they're status. Thanks, they're right there, there is some kind of thing coming up next year, so we have to, you know, iron or something like that.
I have to look.
Yeah.
Joe, is there any timeline on the, uh, four million dollars?
I believe it's, I believe it's twenty-four, but I'm not sure, but we can double check that, Morgan can check that, or I'll, or I'll check it.
I think it'd be good to know what the timeframes are for getting this project done with the four million dollars.
Any other business?
I just have one thing. Um, I got an excess weight permit in today, and I just need authority to sign those and approve them, um.
So who is it, you need, we need to make a motion, we will.
Yeah.
Who, who is it?
Uh, well, today, I don't remember exactly.
Well, you want to make some X P, because what usually, what it usually bill does, he, we put the, the proper on there, and then we go to approve the thing, and then approve you to sign it.
So it's individual?
Yeah, well, it could be, maybe, maybe four or five.
Okay.
Depending on how many, what is the deadline anyway, anybody know?
I think it's March thirty first.
Okay, so you should be getting, you should start getting a bunch of them.
Yeah.
But you can just put that on the meeting next, next.
I'm wondering when we, um, sign these weights. Uh. These weight certificates, um, if we could batch a copy of our new town ordinance. And encourage these trucks to go to speed.
If you can, we have no choice.
I was logging today, and remember, two big logs for us, one with a huge trailer behind, and they were actually going to speed them back up. I wish I had seen there the name on the side of the truck, and I.
PJ Curry.
Is that who it is?
Yeah, the other one was, uh, uh, he. Does all of, uh.
Not the, not.
Out, uh, on, uh, safety, the first Alison on the left. I I respect that they're logging there. But they both went, one of them left four or five times today.
Who's, who's, who's taking the stuff out of my, my PJ Curry?
And there is everyone that's speed on it too.
Any other news? Public comment, we don't, it's actually, I think. We got some public comment down here, no? Okay, no public comment. All right, so the next review meeting. Is a Monday, February sixth, so it's actually on Mondays at six P M. Motion to adjourn? One third, they are.